Unfortunately, we've seen an uptick in recent weeks with gun violence and shots being fired calls that we wanted to reach out to the public like we historically have and address any concerns or questions or ideas that you might have. I've been here 26 years. Unfortunately, with the population growth of Sioux Falls, it brings about some challenges. We've always historically reached out to the public. I can count this as probably my eighth or ninth event like this that we've done. We get great intelligence, great ideas, and great information from the public. Because as I prompt all my officers, sergeants, and supervisors, you're part of the community you serve, not apart from it. So with that, we rely on the public's help. We don't know about the blue van in your alley doing something at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning unless somebody calls us and tells us about it. So I'd like to do some introductions real quick. Lieutenant Adam Peterson is my night shift commander. He has 40 officers and seven sergeants working his shift. Lieutenant Terry Matia is my shift two commander. He has seven sergeants and 42 officers on shift two. We also have community resource officer Brady Lewin. Raise your hand, Brady. And also community resource officer Kyle Johnson. He's looks just like Brady, is a little bit shorter. And we have Sergeant Andy Sebenborn. Sergeant Sebenborn, if you don't know him, is one of the school resource officer supervisors. There's two of them. So we also have Lieutenant Randy Brink. He is the lieutenant in charge of the narcotics and property crime section in the detective bureau. So hopefully, did I leave anyone out? Anyone? Anyone? All right. Hopefully, we can, we have enough resources here to answer almost any question that you have. I would ask you that you keep it constructive, that you keep it based on the area of concern that we're talking about. That area is from Cliff Avenue to the west, Foss Avenue to the east, Rice Street, all the way down to 26th Street. Did everyone hear the boundaries over here? Okay. If somebody in the crowd has a question...
You may have precluded the Kenny Anderson area of concern. It's Cliff to the east, Foss to the west.
All right. I said it wrong, I apologize. That's why I have great people surrounding me so I look better than I am. You're all at the wrong meeting. All right. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Lieutenant Peterson. He's going to be the proctor for tonight. If there's a question that you have, I'd encourage you to bring it up. Be patient with the answers that we give you because I've already said we're not going to be able to give a lot of specifics on names, dates, locations of calls because it's still an ongoing investigation. And we're hampered by that as well as the fact that state law prohibits us giving a lot of information out about juveniles involved in crimes. Everyone have that? Good. Adam?
Thank you. Thank you, Captain. Does this help? Everybody hear me a little bit better? Okay. I'm going to be kind of restricted here because I'm holding two microphones, but I'll do my best. So as the captain said, I'm the night shift lieutenant where the majority of these shootings have unfortunately occurred. Can't hear? Okay. I was the audio visual person in school. Here, let's put this on here. Okay. I apologize, we're a little restricted here. How's that?
(inaudible)
Okay. So as Captain Grease said, I'm Lieutenant Adam Peterson. I'm the night shift watch commander where unfortunately many of these crimes that we've dealt with have occurred since the beginning of the year. I've been in this position since late January and I've got several resources underneath my command that have been actively addressing the problems. Unfortunately, the problems have persisted, which is why we've come up with some other plans to attempt to come at it from a different angle, if you will. Everything that we deal with is involved with patterns. Sometimes it takes a while for us to establish a pattern based on statistics. And statistics don't always relay what the feeling of the community is or what the community is seeing on the street, which is unfortunate and can make it difficult for us to... Is that better over there? Okay. I apologize, I usually get this close and it starts to squelch on me. As I was saying, since the beginning of the year, we've dealt with several crimes and we've now established a pattern, a very obvious pattern of gun crime violence. And what have we done to resolve that? We have reallocated several resources that we traditionally have working on other projects to bring them over into the Kenny Anderson area in an attempt to give those officers proactive opportunities to attack these problems specifically. Our officers that are on the street on patrol are very busy. Unfortunately, the call volume in the city continues to increase and our resources get stretched thin, which reduces our ability to be proactive. In this case, though, we have set them completely aside so that they are not getting calls dispatched to them. You might see smaller calls for service that take longer for us to respond to, but the whole point of that is so that we can get those resources responding to the higher priority calls like you're seeing in your neighborhoods. The shootings themselves that have occurred, they seem like they're clustered, they seem like they're related, but the truth is there's a couple groups of them that are related and several of them that are completely unrelated. So we can talk about that a little bit, but many of those investigations are actively ongoing or involve folks that we're not able to discuss at this time. But we are open for questions, as the captain said, and I hope I can answer them to the best of my ability and try to assuage everybody's concerns that we are in fact aware of the problem and are actively addressing it at this time. Lieutenant Matia, do you have anything you'd like to say? Okay. Let's go to questions then because that's why we're here. Who has the first question? Ma'am?
Leaders Park unfortunately had an incident recently where we had several officers out there investigating a criminal incident. We... So is it an ongoing problem? I would say no. I mean, I've gone mountain biking through there with my son. It's, it's a beautiful park, it's a beautiful neighborhood up there. The amount of incidents that we've had up there have not been significant. But there's no way north Omaha. I walk all the time. It's a banding house. I swear a bullet hole through the front picture window.
Okay.
It's too perfectly round to anything else unless it slingshot in the room or a big lot.
708 Omaha?
Yeah, north Omaha. Yellow and white.
So what we frequently have is a Last Stop CD shop. Can everybody hear me okay? I have big ears, so if you can't, let me know. Last Stop CD shop, for instance, they've been the victim of their windows getting shot with pellet guns where people drive by with a pellet gun or high-powered paint rifles and things like that. And there are those random instances that juveniles do like to enjoy or enjoy doing vandalism, either as a rite of passage or just for something to do. So does that answer your question? We'll have some officers take a look into that and maybe make contact with the homeowner and see if they're aware of it, if maybe they know.
And I got some lady who lived there who passed away.
Oh, okay.
(inaudible).
One second, please.
Did that answer your question, ma'am?
Okay. Sir, did you have a question?
No.
Sir? Okay. The question over there was are officers a part of us or against us? Is that correct, sir?
I'm either a part of your problems and you're not. You just need to be, so the ones that live here that are...
Nope. I appreciate your support, sir. This gentleman was saying that sometimes law enforcement throughout the country and different areas of the country, communities perceive their officers differently. We feel that we're very fortunate here in this community, that we have the support of the community. And as regards to whether or not we're a part of it, we are absolutely a part of it. We're out there every day. We live in the community and we believe in the community and we're vested in it. And so thank you for that. Ma'am? Yes?
These shootings that are going on, on the east side, I just want to ask, are they juveniles or are they adults? Because school is going to start soon.
Yep. That's a very valid concern and something that we have absolutely considered and we have been in discussions with the school district. Sergeant Sebenborn was brought on board as one of the SRO supervisors over there. I was an SRO and an SRO sergeant as well. And we're keenly aware of the fact that school is coming up very soon. In regards to whether or not they're juveniles and adults, it's a mixture of both. I think there's several groups that are involved with this, both adults and kids that are by definition juveniles in the state of South Dakota. But we are aware of that and we're working actively to have a plan with the school district in place before the first day of school so that we can be ready in case there are problems at school.
So it's juveniles and adults that were looking, right?
There's multiple incidents. Some of the incidents that occurred, some of the shootings that occurred involved juveniles, some of the shootings that occurred involved adults. And not exclusively, some of them are a mix. But we are aware of the majority of the people that are involved with these, so... Who else? Yes, ma'am, in the... V-neck.
And there was a shooting two weeks ago. My husband saw it. Did you guys even show up or down the house? And you know, he questioned us about what we saw. And there were multiple people there. Did you look at the apartment buildings that were associated with the shooting?
Yes, I'm very aware of that call. That call was actually called in by one of the officers that lives in that area and he was a witness as well. Yep, I'm sorry. Her question was, or her statement was that they live over by Frank Olson Park and on June 16th, there was a shooting that occurred over there. Her husband was a witness to it and her statement was that officers had not arrived for approximately an hour and a half after the shooting had occurred.
(inaudible).
Yep, I would be happy to, yep, I'll be happy to talk about that. Now, the hour and a half, I don't have the exact time in front of me, but that is incorrect. The officers received the call almost immediately because as I said, an off-duty officer who lives in the area witnessed the shooting and called it in and was able to give up-to-date information as it was occurring. I was working that night and officers flooded the area and they were able to locate several of the individuals involved with that and also establish and gain intelligence on the others that had gotten away that night. And several of them were located at a later time and petitioned in the court. So it may not have seemed like that. I'm also in charge on night shift of the street crimes unit. The street crimes unit is a group that specifically addresses street crimes. They also deal in human trafficking and prostitution arrests. We have retasked them to address this problem and they often work in plainclothes and in unmarked vehicles. So there are a lot of officers that you might not even see for reasons that are obvious. It's easier to catch people doing things when you're not sitting out there with your lights on. But we did successfully get the majority of those shooters that were involved in Frank Olson Park. So, but thank you. And if you see those things, please, by all means, your husband, I don't know if he called in or if they got a statement from him, but if you see them, don't feel like any minute detail you might have is not worth calling in. Oftentimes, as little as, oh, we saw what we thought was a blue car, maybe older, those kind of leads develop into significant leads that sometimes break the cases for us. We need, it's that partnership with the community that we talk about. We're stronger together and we need you to call us when you see something. So, thank you. Yes, ma'am, right there.
Do you think it's gang-related?
I would say that some of these shootings are involving individuals that are by state definition would be a gang. Not all of them are, though. And we know who these players are. We're not going to legitimize them by saying their name because they don't deserve that kind of recognition. But we definitely have an awareness of which members are who and what they're part of. And they know who we are. Yeah. Yes, ma'am?
I live over by Frank Olson Park as well. And on behalf of my family and myself, I just want to say publicly thank you to your department. You guys have a very tough job and I for one and my family for one appreciate your dedication serving and protecting us. And I don't think you get enough recognition except when things go bad. So I wanted to...
Thank you. I'm very kind of you.
I want to follow up. Like Frank Olson Park, I feel like there's a lot of sections over there that are really dark at night. And I'm just wondering if there's any talk, and I'm wondering if when you look at the patterns, are you seeing, you know, you talked about neighborhoods, but what about times a day? And is it mostly weekends?
I'm going to take that one because that's some of the things that I do during the day in the office. We work with the street department, the lighting department, all the other departments, code enforcement, the fire department, everything. Like if you remember a few years back in Pettigrew Heights area, there were some houses there that were of concern and they were unsafe. We worked with them to come up with a plan on what we needed to do to either get them to code or take care of it. So with that being said, yes, we do. We have a crime analyst on the police department. His sole job is to run all the stats and the numbers. So when I ask for information in a certain area, he can break that down and show me in this one block area, how many car thefts we've had, stolen guns out of the cars, how many stolen cars, how many vandalisms, narrowed all the way down to the minute details. And then we target our resources accordingly based on where the needs are in the city and we triage that. If we have shots being fired in the city, everything else goes to the side because I don't want somebody hit by those rounds. And thankfully, we're doing well on that. The incident that happened on Cliff Avenue a couple weeks ago to a month ago with the homicide there, that was independent, not related to any of this, just to get that out right away. Real quick, I owe this guy, he's been holding his hands up forever. Yes, sir? Yes, sir?
I want to say how heartening it is to see this community turn off. I think that's great.
Yes.
Our experience, we live right off of the anniversary by Harman and Walcourt. Our house was shot a week ago today at 4:30 in the morning, three rounds into the garage. An unusual caliber weapon, unusual round for use, very expensive rounds. So again, also to your question about lighting, we've got a street light, brand new one, nicely bright Friday end of our driveway. But I've got just two questions. One is I heard no mention of Crime Stoppers or reward being offered for information. Have I just missed that on media?
No. To answer that, I will tell you, the recent ones that's occurred in the last couple weeks, Lieutenant Brink, correct me if I'm wrong, we have the majority of those people are in custody. So... Anything to add on that? Because I don't want to speak out of turn, that's your area. But the majority of those people that are involved are in custody with some cleanup work to be done on the ones that aren't quite in custody yet.
Now, what do you say to that? Question, boys?
What was number two? I'll wait for him, though. Yes. Yes. No. All right. I'm going to eat this mic so everyone can hear me. I apologize for that. One, one minute. He's got number two. Go ahead, sir.
This is sort of a meta question that ensures all the police forces responsibility. Is there anyone lobbying for legislation to provide identification in ammunition laws?
I have no idea, sir.
I think it's a great idea.
That is something that I would encourage you then to bring forward because I'm not part of that. That's, the question was, did everyone hear that over here? All right. No? He wanted to know if there's any legislature going forward or anyone lobbying to try and get identification when you buy ammo. So... Okay. Question? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, there is. By the way...
There is?
There is.
Okay. This gentleman says it is, so maybe you two can all get together after. Because I wasn't aware of it. Yep, just a second. Ma'am, go ahead.
I was just wondering, is there a place where obviously there can't be a lot of details, but you probably relieved a lot of people by saying the reason shootings have been that people are in custody or know where they are? Is there any place on your website that we can double check? My office has had gunfire last Thursday and we didn't, we just heard it, only two people called it in. It was right at 41st and Minnesota Avenue. And we never did get confirmation if it was potentially fireworks or if they found evidence. Is there any place on your website that you can give, because limited information that would, you know, I answered some calls...
The answer to the first, everyone hear the question? Is there any place on our website that shows developments of calls and when people get arrested and stuff like that? The answer is no, according to Mr. Clemmons, who runs that. But we're writing that down and that's something great to look into. I can tell you that when arrests are made, if you pay attention to the morning press briefings or the media, that we do a 10:30 media briefing every morning. So if we make an arrest, especially in a high-profile type of shots being fired, a homicide, something of that sort, the announcement's made there and we have all the players that are working that from the detective bureau to the street officers coming out to those briefings.
Can you have a transcript of that press release on your website? Because we can't always watch a video in a scenario where a video is looking at that.
He wrote the question down and we'll, we'll check. I don't know. We'll check and that's somebody else's lane, but it's an idea. So, I'm sorry. I'm trying to be fair. Yes, ma'am. Ladies first.
Is there any concern of gang members and graffiti that might be? Going around, I know several years ago in my neighborhood, there was graffiti on the sidewalk, there was graffiti in front of Oliver Hydrant at Cleveland School. And I reported that. But, and being that I worked at a middle school, I saw a lot of the information on, you know, the colors and the symbols, the gang members being there. So I was slightly interested in that to see if there was any correlation between the...
Okay. That's a very good question. Gangs oftentimes will mark their locations with graffiti or tagging. That's a known fact that we have to deal with. Fortunately, our city has a very strong ordinance on eliminating that graffiti. It does fall upon the business owner or the homeowner to assist us because that's where that partnership comes in to get that knocked out. But that's how we keep them from establishing a foothold in the neighborhoods. When you call us for those things, we will come out, we will take photographs and document those, we will do a case report. And sometimes we have graffiti that is just taggers, people that are street artists, if you will. Those folks are not necessarily gang members. Luckily, our detectives are very well-versed in those areas and they're able to identify usually if somebody is a tagger or if somebody's a gang member. But they keep a very thick file on that with all the information on the different taggings. And that information is sent out and we make sure that the uniform services are aware of it. And it tracks movement of those gangs and it helps us to keep them from establishing footholds in certain neighborhoods.
Just as an add-on to that, because it's kind of funny, Saturday morning, this past Saturday morning, my phone rang at 7:15. It was a highway patrolman that's a friend of mine, wanted to make me aware that they had tennis shoes hanging over the line at 26th and Melanie Lane. They were red tennis shoes, so he didn't know who to call, so he called me. So I got one of my morning shift sergeants out there, they took photographs on it, they put it on our website, they emailed it out, it went right into the files where we tracked that. Because it is indicative of some type of behavior, whether it's gang-related or just like Lieutenant Peterson said, street art. But it happens all the time, even when you're not working and you're sleeping in on a Saturday morning. So, yes.
All right, I'm going to take one. Gentleman here in the tan?
Is there such a thing in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, as stop and frisk?
Okay, he's asking if there's such a thing in Sioux Falls, South Dakota as stop and frisk. So we're governed by many laws for search and seizure. So, great question. If an officer believes that criminal activity is afoot or happening and they believe the subject is armed with a weapon and have that reasonable suspicion, we can pat people down for weapons. We are permitted to do that. Oh, you're good? Yep, one moment, ma'am. So we are able to do that, but there's certain things that we have to articulate as law enforcement because we protect people's constitutional rights. So I don't want to search somebody unless I have to and we have to articulate why we do certain things and why we search people in a certain manner.
In New York, that's... Very well.
Correct, it did. New York had great success with it and I believe that has curbed back the other way now. And I'm, I'm not going to judge their, the legal ways they did things. I know what works for us here in Sioux Falls.
We learned from New York and not from...
That's right. Well, I can't answer that question. Yes, ma'am, in top row.
What do we do as a community to keep ourselves safer and maybe to deter this type of activity in our neighborhood?
Great question. What do we do in our community to curtail this activity and what can we do to make it safer? And the best thing is, and I'll go all the way back through several chiefs of police and officers and what we all subscribe to is, we cannot do this job alone without you folks. You folks holding us to task, calling us on everything that you see going on in your neighborhood, that is the thing that is going to make us successful. And you're, you're the eyes and ears of all your neighborhoods. We work in your neighborhoods and yes, many of us do live in your neighborhoods, but you are multiplying the force of us here by, you know, 100,000. So if everybody communicates with us, use your Crime Stoppers and give us a call and let us know what's going on. Even if you think the information's not the best, give it to us, let us disseminate that and it goes through Lieutenant Brink. He sends those out through all the divisions of the department, the Crime Stoppers, and they get assigned to officers and they follow up on those investigations. And quite honestly, that's where a lot of, when I worked in narcotics for several years, I'm going to tell you right now, 95% of the search warrants I did and cases I did came from Crime Stoppers. Because one, we take pride in that because it's directly affecting you as a community. If you give us a Crime Stoppers, I want to try and make it the best I can for you. And that's why we try and respond to those calls for service quicker when we have the Crime Stoppers. So continue to do that. 1-800-367-7007?
Yes.
1-800-367-7007. Pretty easy number to remember.
I'm just going to tag on your question that you had. What do you do to keep your family safe and keep the crime down? Exactly what we're doing tonight. I mean, it's not, it's a rare occurrence where people will get out and talk like this. I mean, look at the turnout that we have today. I've done this for a long time. If you realize the fact that each and every one of these officers here have people that live in the city, their kids go to school, they walk the streets just like everyone else. We work for you, so do not think you cannot call us when you have a question about something. They're going to take the call by priority, but if something looks wrong to you, report it. Because that's the little, might be the missing piece that we need to break a case.
What's the best...
I don't tell jokes. I'm horrible, Adam. Yes, sir?
All right. We live in this neighborhood over here on Third Street, but I want to mention that we do have an Oakley Association that we meet once a month and we do talk about speed, all kinds of stuff. So everybody that's probably in here is more than welcome to come to our meetings. The other issue is, we're talking guns and stuff, but I'm also talking some violence. And the deal is, there's a lot of soccer players over here and it's really been filling up over the summer. And cars race by 60, 70 miles an hour. If one of your kids was over there playing soccer and he won between two cars, he's gone.
Yes.
That's a death. So that's something we've been trying to figure out what to do. We're talking speed bumps and stuff, but then it's hard, the snowing will, but I don't know if you got something that you can lay out there and take it out in the winter, but we need a slow speed bump.
That's a good idea.
All right. You're talking to two people, Lieutenant Brink and myself, that were the traffic sergeant. I did it for three years, he did it for four years. So we worked that all the time with Heath Teaser from the city engineer's office. And you're doing speed enforcement. At my last count, I don't know about Randy, we had like 150 active complaint zones in the city. The traffic officers and the park officers do an outstanding job in the city with what they have. In the summer, when the schools are out, the majority of the school resource officers get kicked over to the parks department. So that's why you got bike patrol out there, you got everyone focusing on there. What I would tell you and encourage you to do, if you see a speed complaint zone, you have to call it in. I'd get like four or five of those a day when I was a sergeant doing that. So...
And I just put it on hold and keep calling guys.
Any...
And the only other thing is, is that I don't want children to get hurt.
Nope.
But also, people get pissed off when a guy leaves the game and lost or whatever, he takes off. And the other guy's mad and he takes off after him. You know, you never know what can build up to a problem or you're going to have an accident or one of these.
Right. Right, and it happens in an instant. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, here we go. I want to know, I want to tell the public how many street crimes officers we have. How many officers we have to tackle the gang violence? And I'm gonna say on these streets, four days a week. We have applicants from one end to the other, another gang member, that are fighting over tribes, okay? We do have juveniles. The point is that the city board decides, and I've been stressing to council, I have been stressing to the mayor's office, we need more police officers. Because what's happening is, in bigger cities, the crime is taking over the city. If you're in a bigger city, coming from Chicago, Florida, what's happening here is, the police is wanting, to call, can barely keep up with the crime. We have four street crimes unit officers, okay? I have asked the mayor if he can put in a budget for two more, which council has to vote on that in August. We, the police department is trying to stop. And what's gonna happen is, if we don't have more policemen on these streets, and not just policemen, when crimes happen and we have videotapes and we're out there on those streets addressing the crime, and then street advocates have this retaliation against police officers. What we need to do is, we need to stress, police officers need to stress to keep burns, that we need more police officers on the streets. Because what's gonna happen is, that these gang members, and I'm just saying gang members because I know every single one in every single house, is gonna take over and we're gonna have a problem where then we're gonna rely on the state troopers to come in and help the police department, and we're gonna have the county sheriff to come in for the police department.
Ma'am, I'm gonna interrupt you real quick. Did you have a question? Because I have a whole bunch over here.
So I'm saying, yes, we need to address to the public, the best way we can address this crime with four undercover units.
To answer one of your questions, yes, we have four street crimes unit officers and one sergeant, but we have 264 police officers on the department that's dedicated to this. That's why you have the patrol officers here, members from the detective bureau here, members from the schools here, from the community resource officers. And I do think we have a couple community ambassadors here today as well, right?
What are your neighbors?
Okay. I'm sorry, we've neglected this side. Go ahead, ma'am. Here.
Where are we pointing at?
That lady right there. She's been waiting.
Ma'am, that has been sitting. I'll get you in a second, ma'am. We need to try to spread it out as much as we can. And we're gonna have a chance after this is done for everybody to get, come on down and meet us face-to-face and ask your questions as well. So if we don't get to you, and I apologize, it's awesome that this many people have come out, but time constraints and things of that nature, it might be a one-on-one afterwards too. So I'm hoping some of the questions will answer some of the multiple questions. Yes, ma'am.
.............................................................................................................................................................................................
Yep, I agree completely. The neighborhood watch organizations are fantastic. And if you're not a member of those, please, I urge you to get with your community and either form one or get with those that are already in existence. Officer Kyle Johnson is one of our heads for helping to coordinate those and we have National Night Out coming up very soon here. And that's a great opportunity to get involved with your neighborhood watch organizations. I'm gonna get this gentleman over here, he's been raising his hand almost the whole time. Yes, sir.
My name is Mr. Boyd, I'm with the Weather Association. And as an association, we're on community watch, we try and make sure that we have meaning in regards to our community. You mentioned Oakview Neighborhood, and you mentioned lighting, maybe, young lady about the lighting. What we did was called, did a thing where we did light bulbs that you screw in and once you screw those light bulbs, they can be switched on and it keeps that light bulb on at night. It comes on at night and it goes off during the day. But I just want to thank the police for what they're doing because we're doing action with our association. We have the police at our associated meetings, we talk to them, we talk to them about what's going on in the neighborhood. And if you don't have an association, join the association, come to a meeting. I know anybody that lives in the Woodyard neighborhood, we're gonna send out flyers to the majority of our next meetings, so I'd like to see you all there.
Thank you, sir. Absolutely. Fantastic information. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to address something that was on Facebook a couple weeks ago. There was a group of apparently trans people that were physical and on ten, and police officers were there. And they went, they kind of broke them up and then they just let go, and there was more physical attacks. I know that they were fighting in my neighborhood, and I live in southeast, house went tightly, it was like seven houses there, it was a disaster. What would happen, since there were no arrests made, if somebody pulled a knife and these transics killed each other? Or one shot one another and they had a head injury? And then our taxidermist could take care of them for however long? HandiMan is right down there. HandiMan is picking up needles in their back alley and threw in feces. And I would like to take my 10, 12, and 13-year-old grandfathers there to shot some of the little ethnic shots. I'm forbidden by my daughter and my son and daughter-in-law to take, and my 10, 12, and 13-year-old grandfathers there. I see the kids coming out of the banquet with their parents, they have to be around this. And what's happening is, I don't think any of our council members or maybe our mayor would take their kids or grandkids down there for a while. I take my dog to the vet right across from the Grace Grace School. I see transics there that are so out of it, they're literally falling off the tanning wall. The trash there is pretty scary. And what's happening with these businesses, what would the city be liable for? And if we're just gonna give up, there's some, there's some real addiction problems there. If we're just gonna give up a bed and a needle, and some of them don't pay well enough to even go into the banquet anymore, they're kind of a drink and a bag lunch because they can't eat. If we can't, maybe they need to be arrested, put in the system so that we're able to clear it up that maybe they need some kind of halfway health program. Because assuming this is always making a killing for businesses, it's killing all of businesses.
I agree.
And there wasn't no arrests made, so...
Yep, let me address it now, okay? Yep, absolutely. I appreciate it. You had a lot to say there and they are huge socioeconomic issues that we deal with and they're cyclical, unfortunately. We are only, as the police department, as good as our community and the network that exists. Sioux Falls has one of the best networks to help folks with addiction, homelessness, and the other plights of society that might befall upon them. Unfortunately, there's always gonna be a segment of society that chooses that lifestyle, no matter how much. It's the old, "you can bring a horse to water, but you can't make him drink" saying. There are a lot of people that we can bring to the trough, but they will not drink from that water, no matter what we do. Now, in regards to the folks that were fighting, I don't know if the officers witnessed it, this is a very common situation. You think it might... They were there, was it... Let me just real quick explain what we can and cannot do. If there's fighting behavior that's going on and we respond, and this is quite often the case, it happens at bars, it happens downtown, it happens everywhere, not just with transients, but with all walks of society, where there might be a fight and we get a call for service there. If we don't witness it, we need to have either a citizen that's willing to do a citizen's arrest for disorderly conduct, or we need to have a victim that's willing to press charges. If we don't have that, our hands are tied. There's not much we can do. Class II misdemeanors require us to witness them in order for us to make an arrest. We can cut a case report and it might get sent over to either the city attorney or the state's attorney for review, for prosecution. But again, it's witness-driven and it's victim-driven for certain crimes like that, so...
Do you think there are really citizens who are arrested?
Well, each situation is unique. And there are situations, hundreds of them every year, where we have that and we have that cooperation and we're able to successfully make an arrest. And for every hundred that we have, we have another hundred where nobody wants to do anything and nobody's cooperating with us at all. So, I can't speak to specific situations necessarily, but generalizing the situation, that's what we deal with on a regular basis, so...
So if I was in a town and I called 911, are you gonna have an arrest?
If we have a crime that's occurred, we're gonna investigate, we have to establish the probable cause. If a citizen calls, we have to establish the probable cause. Even if the citizen thinks that there's probable cause, our investigation has to establish that for us to make that arrest. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we have juveniles that are in some of these gangs. Where are their parents?
Well...
Are they... ......
Yep. The question was, we have juveniles that are in gangs, where are the parents? That's a difficult question. You have situations where you have parents that are trying their best and their kids have fallen in with the wrong folks and the parents are doing everything they can. You have folks where you have single parents trying to work one or two jobs and they're not able to be around as much, but they're doing their best. They're really struggling. You have some parents that enable the kids that are gonna be out there doing these crimes. We have all walks. I would say the majority of the parents care and they're doing what they can in our community. But again, most of us in here, I'm sure, or a lot of us are parents and we understand the difficulties of parenthood with both parents present and stable jobs. Try to put yourself in their shoes and empathize a little bit with them. If you don't have a spouse, if you don't have stable income, if you make less income, you have to work two jobs, if you don't have your own car, things like that, it makes it significantly more difficult. A lot of them folks are doing the best they can, though.
Left, left. That gentleman right there, blue shirt.
Where at? Gentleman in the blue shirt?
Has there been any discussion about installing maybe some security cameras in some of these more, you know, parts that have a lot of troubles?
Oh, yeah. There's been a lot of discussion.
For the purpose of dissuading the teenage juvenile remain out there, I've heard you and to... .........
Yep, we take a lot of proactive approaches. We do have access to some things. I'm not gonna go into the details of those because we don't want people to know about them necessarily, their surveillance footage, their security cameras. So, the deterrent factor, we try to have the deterrent factor be our officers in the marked units and the uniforms out there. As far as gathering information or something like that on these areas that are having these problems, we do work with several partners from the state, from the federal agencies, to get tools like that and utilize them.
Hey, over here. Get that hand up all the whole time.
The whole time? Yes, ma'am. Your arm must be tired.
We're over here. We're here.
I got a different question, but I changed my mind and might as well ask a question on the second...
Back of the line. No, I'm just kidding.
No, but the issue about the transient question just makes... I'll say a few things. First of all, I really want to disagree with the characterization of homeless as a chosen place style.
Sure, thank you.
A blatant characterization, no. And then also, we're here to talk about gun violence. And I would ask, is it a fair characterization that probably most of your suspects with these gun crimes have not been transients, but are more likely residents and spoiled teenagers and affected teenagers and residents rather than any one transient?
Thanks for addressing that. Because I don't have a chance and there's so many good input. So I've worked that neighborhood for, oh geez, I'm gonna date myself, but I basically worked that neighborhood for, I worked the neighborhood that she's speaking about, she's speaking of the transients and not necessarily labeling them as transients. A lot of folks are put in economic situations, either from addiction, as this lady pointed out, or reasons that they can't control, to label them that. But having worked down there, I can tell you that not all of them enjoy the lifestyle that they're in, or what situations they're in now. And they're trying to do better and there is an addiction problem. But moreover, there are some folks that enjoy that lifestyle as well. They don't necessarily visit the Bishop Dudley or the banquet. They go to there because those are friends that they grew up with when they were younger and they come down to meet with them. And yes, to have alcoholic beverages at times with them and we try and enforce that as much as we can. But there are folks that want to be there, don't want to be there, and don't have a choice. So when we speak of the transient community, just keep that in mind, because Sioux Falls, South Dakota, we are all really, truly good people here and want the best for people. That's why we have so many services here, what we do in the community and it continues to expand. So, as far as the addiction problems, we're trying to work with the county. The county specifically works a lot with this area. So I hope you can hear me, I keep moving my arm, so... Yes, ma'am. I gotta try and be friendly here, so I... All right, gray shirt, I know you did have it up for a while.
Okay. I got a couple questions. I'm gonna take one offline because it's gonna rattle a lot of people up.
Let me...
Second question, ShotSpotter. Has Sioux Falls ever thought about that program that 70 other cities have?
ShotSpotter. ShotSpotter is a program that utilizes microphones and cameras to locate and quickly get information out to officers in the street by detecting the sound of the gunshot. Hartford, Connecticut, we just recently worked with them on a project for something not related to this, but they use ShotSpotter. Our problem that we have right now is something that comes and goes, it's not as prevalent and permanent. Now, if this, God forbid, and that's why we're here, so it doesn't, if this city gets to that point, certainly ShotSpotter and any type of technology that's out there would be something we would look at and consider. But at this time, it's so scattered out, I mean, it doesn't seem like it, I'll give you that, but it is not, we're not urbanized like some of these other places that use ShotSpotter technology.
I understand that. When that shot drive-by is less than 150 foot away from your house, let me answer this, the second question, gonna piss off a lot of people. Rules of engagement, if I'm outside, I got a drive-by going on.
Yeah, that's a...
Right.
General...
Now, the background, 20 years, 8 seconds, I'm more retired. Yes, I can. I will protect and do everything I can for my family.
Okay.
So what was your question, sir? And thank you for your service, by the way.
Multiple times up here, we have had crazy crap going on. This last drive-by was less than 128 foot away from my house.
Okay.
I see it, I'm supposed to call 911, you guys got your reaction time, went right there. I got somebody punching through walls on an apartment building.
You still need to maintain that you have an expected danger that you're faced with at the time.
And how do I know we're not gonna swing out that side of that car?
That, I can't answer that question because here's the reason why. Everything is different. It's situational dictate. The state's attorney's office would review all that stuff. You definitely have a right to protect yourself, but there's too many variables for me to give you a yes or no answer, black and white. give you a yes or no answer, black and white. Yes. You can protect your, you can protect yourself and your family when you think there's an imminent threat, because that's what the law says. I'm not gonna get into what, what else with the, because I'd be setting you up for failure. I mean, that's not an answer I can win that question. Not, not to be rude, yes sir, I promise you, I'm sorry. Uh, Kyle, you got anything on that?
That's kind of an area, uh, the question was, does the cost of housing in the Sioux Falls area have any impact on the crime that we're seeing occurring? Is that correct, sir? Okay. Uh, that is probably above and beyond the police department's pay grade. That's a community question where I would probably bring it to your council members and have that discussion with them. There are lower income apartments that you're gonna see folks that are involved in criminal activity, there's higher end apartments that you're gonna see folks involved in criminal activity. Is it possible that could be a nexus? Absolutely. But have we seen any statistics to back that up? Not at this time, not in our city. Ma'am Holden, uh, okay? Ma'am, right there, yup? Yup, go ahead.
Alright, I'd like to answer that because you're, you're... Well, you're spot on, you're right. You gotta find the sources on where they're getting the guns. That's why we're doing the proactive stuff and getting the detectives involved and doing spotter patrols throughout the neighborhoods. You can't guess where the next car hopping robbery or burglary is gonna happen at. And you're right about everything you said. I wanna find where these kids are getting guns from. When we find that it's coming from an adult or another kid, that is their job. That's what they do, they backtrack it all the way to the last possible owner and see if it was legally transferred or not. And if it's not, then they take the appropriate steps and forward a report to the state's attorney's office for charging. Now, just give me a second, cuz I'm gonna be that guy for a second. It's eight twenty five, I'm sorry, it's seven twenty five. I don't have a time limit on tonight, but I wanna keep it down to that hour, hour and fifteen, twenty minutes max, cuz I have a lot of resources here that I'd like to get back on the streets to work. That's not sliding any of this, but I'm gonna start speeding up the questions a little bit and keep it centralized to this area and this problem at this time. If that's alright with everyone? Yes ma'am?
Okay. And I live between Sycamore and Fox. And, um, I've been there for twenty years. It's become a melting pot, it's wonderful, but I notice, I have a dog and this is the only way, in the middle of the night, he has squats on. And from where I am, I can always now hear people behind the apartments, between the apartments and the church. I can hear them. Sometimes I see people come down the church parking lot and they're kinda been hidden back there. And I have noticed more police presence that drive through in that. But one time I came home from work and you were in my backyard because you were looking for somebody, scared the daylights out of me. But anyway, I do applaud everything you do, but for me, um, I feel silly calling in if I just hear people because who knows, you know, what they're doing? But that's free.
When in doubt, call it out. Call it, because that's our job. You don't know what's going on in there and I do not want you getting out of your house, putting your slippers on and stumbling out into something that you don't know what you're getting involved in. That's our job. Yes?
You get one. The increasing guns? And I've been here all my life. I'm hoping for the right answer. And I've been here all my life and it scares me when I hear this talk about gangs. I agree that we shouldn't give them any credit for it, but is it as scary as my mind is blown it out of proportion to being? Should I be as worried as I am?
The second question was, should she be scared for her life? I got you, my wittier friend, I will get you. And if not, I'll talk to you offline afterwards as well. And if you want in public forum, I'll, I'll put, tweet it out or something like that. Gun control, the governor's gun control was brought up. If, if that bill or law that was passed has made a change, and I don't think it significantly has, um, I'm a supporter of the second amendment rights as well, be, because we are protectors of the constitution. But I will say that the biggest thing with these weapons, and I will tell you, a majority of them are stolen out of vehicles, people's houses, uh, people's dresser drawers, people's closets. So you have a group of juveniles over at a house, they're partying during the day or doing whatever they're doing, playing Xbox, Playstation, I probably missed a couple there. But they, they get in their friends' parents' closets and, and, and find unsecured weapons and they're taking those. Is this loud enough? Can everybody hear me? Alright. They're, they're taking these weapons and they're, they're using them in an illegal manner. And there's also some adults that get in possession of these because either they're stealing them from vehicles as well. Uh, there's also juveniles that do car hoppings, lock your doors at night. Don't leave your weapon in the car would be the, probably the best option to keep it under lock and key. That's what we're trying to put out, that's the message. We, we can put out the information, lock your car doors and do not, and keep your weapons secured, that's the main thing. And being a very conscious and self-conscious firearms owner, as a large majority of us are here in South Dakota, we should be, that's, that's what we need to do in our communities. And your question about being safe, I think you should feel safe. I, and we were talking earlier about the neighborhood, the lady here in the white was talking about taking her children down to the, um, neighborhood near the Bishop Dudley in that area. I purposely go down there off duty and take my family members down there because nobody's taken over that neighborhood from us. And then if there's an issue, I call it in. So I would tell you, don't be afraid to take your family down there, you shouldn't be. Now, I know that there's, I know, I know there's FaceTime videos and out, out there and that, and I understand that. What I'm telling you is, is you should not be afraid, we are in that area constantly and dealing with intoxicated individuals and people that are scuffling with each other. So, it, it hurts me for that when you, when you do say that, but I personally go down there as much as I can. I have to go, next question, gray shirt with a white t-shirt underneath, I missed you about ten times. I'll hand this, well, I was gonna hand it over, I guess I will not. So I did, I, I myself worked in the street crimes unit, uh, back in 2006 for a couple years. Back then exclusively, we had talked earlier about graffiti, that's, that's one thing, identifying them. And there are street artists that do things as well, but getting that graffiti reported and once that is covered, um, we can divulge it, who, who the person is. If you see people wearing, some people will call us a gang, but we're, we're not because we're not involved in illegal activity. That's the difference that makes us as a community different than actual gang members. So if you people, see people, they call it flying colors, they're wearing the same clothing, um, if you see one pant leg up on one side, that could be if they're from a Piru nation, for instance, which would be Bloods. And Crips are a different side, they're, they're different side of their body where they posture things. But if you see something that's odd and it starts in the schools, Sergeant Seaborn is back here, uh, with, he works exclusively with the SRO programs, that education gets pushed out, pushed out to the schools and we rely on them to start identifying in the schools, cuz that's where a lot of this takes place and takes hold, is they get with their group of friends in the schools and that's where we try to interact with the kids the most. That's why we have such a strong SRO program, is to help alleviate those issues. Yes sir?
Did that answer your question, sir? Citizens Police Academy is a great resource, they teach that, they talk about it. The school officers and the school sergeants are outstanding, they recognize it. But be careful, because just cuz somebody's wearing a blue shirt or wearing one pant leg up higher than the other, doesn't mean they're in an organized gang. If you, all that live here, been here last year, you remember some of the issues that we had on the east side of the city last year with a certain group of people. They're no longer here anymore. There is no national organization to the groups that we're dealing with now. So that should alleviate that concern. Now, I'm gonna answer this gentleman's question and then I'm gonna be that guy again. I'm gonna take three, two questions from each section before we end it up. I'm gonna be the bad guy, cuz there's no way that I can answer everyone's question. While we're here, feel free to come up afterwards and ask any questions. Yes sir? That's a good, perfect way to put it. We have found no national organization to any affiliated gangs. Because, and trust me when I say, and I made it a point to tell Lieutenant Peterson early on in this presentation when he answered a question, they know who we are. We're on them all the time. This is, I don't wanna minimize this, this is nothing new. This is the stuff that we do behind the curtain that people don't see to keep the city safe. Alright? Another question in this group, wait, you're one of them, but yes. Yeah, you. Yes, they can. They can, I mean, there's parameters that have to be met, there's steps that have to be met, but to answer your question, yes. And they're not all stolen, some of them haven't been reported yet because they don't know they're stolen, or it's somebody else is borrowing it from a friend of a friend's parents. Yes sir? Oh, good, well, that counts for one for this section. Yes ma'am?
And I heard, uh, I seen two cars pull up behind me, they didn't belong there. And so, um, I heard a lot of noise, uh, music playing and I heard a person and howling and whatever, you know, I was just about to get out of my car, but I said, no, I did not get out, cuz there was two or three of them, I seen two people walk up and there was two more guys in the car. And I'm like, oh, okay, what should I do? I had a hammer in there, but, uh, I, I didn't get out the car, I called the police, you know, and the guys answered it. And I was in fear, cuz I said, God, maybe they are jumping or something, you know, and they left two more guys in the car. So the police came and I'm whispering on the phone in the car because I don't know if they seen me, you know, with the phone up. And so, but you guys came and I still got a little tears, cuz I was scared.
Sure, I'd be scared too, I mean, that's frightening. And some of them do, some of them do. I'm glad it worked for you. White shirt? Go ahead, Mr. Kadir.
We are a citizen, you hold our life. City of Sioux Falls, growing up, and the police department is not gonna be empty for long. It's our responsibility as a citizen to stop and if we see something that's not right, not judging by the color of the skin or how what they wear, then we should be doing something bad to our community, to our neighborhood. Then you're going to, that's the biggest responsibility we have, united for our...
You're right. We like you to have the good law enforcement, but I think every one of us citizens have our responsibility if we see something that's not right. Not judging by the color of the skin or how what they wear, then we should be doing something bad to our community, to our neighborhood. Then you're going to, that's the biggest responsibility we have, united for our... You're right. I would echo that, trust your gut, if something doesn't feel right, it's usually not right. You wanna come up and finish? Cuz you were like, spot on. Alright, one more from the, I'm sorry. Who hasn't had one? I know, but I owe one more to this section. Oh, you're deferring, alright, don't forget that. Yes, whoever's being pointed to, yes? Yes. And my answer to your question is maybe, because if, I'm gonna, we can verify how many, there's been a lot, so I'm not gonna doubt your number at all, but I will tell you, in certain areas of people calling in, a firework sounds like a gunshot. We send officers to all those and thankfully, the vast majority of them turn out to be a car backfiring or a firework, especially this close after the Fourth of July. July, August, June usually are horrible for us for those fireworks, but there have been several. I'd have to look up each of them to tell you if it's gang related or not. I don't wanna give the misconception to everyone here that Sioux Falls is rampant with gang violence. It is not. You got two groups of people that haven't been able to get along, just like we did last year, just like before. Sorry. Yeah?
I'll tell you this. I'll tell you this, that, that, they're not random, for the most part. That one wasn't random, the majority of them are not random, the majority of them are involving folks that know each other, be it gangs or be it just citizens that are engaging in behaviors that are illegal, uh, sometimes related to narcotics, sometimes related to just beefs. There are very, 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 very few random crimes, truly random crimes where a citizen is walking down the street and suddenly they're the victim of random gun violence. That very rarely happens. Right, but most of those aren't random. I, I can't go into the details, but I will tell you, most of them aren't random. Our concern is that somebody will randomly get hit from these things, because they're throwing bullets in a occupied, you know, a, a, a community. There's a chance that could happen, but it's not random, so... And I'm glad your kids go to Washington, one of the best high schools that we have in the city. I was trying to make it out of here without talking. I, I want you to know, we, I'm Andrew Seaborn, the sergeant of the school resource officers, myself and Sergeant Leach supervise all the school resource officers in town. We've been in regular contact with Mr. Conrad, the principal over there, and then we also stay in contact with Assistant Superintendent Jamie Nold. So, there's a lot of conversations that take place, I'm not gonna speak specifically for the school district what their plans are, but they're one of the many partners in this whole, um, community where we've gotta work with them as well and help be aware of this problem and help solve this problem. So, I would direct, uh, direct you to probably specifically if he goes to Washington to talk to Mr. Conrad, cuz he's been in contact with Eric Meyer, who's your school resource officer over there, um, he's been a great wealth of knowledge on, on all of this, so but I can, like I said, without speaking for them, I can tell you, we've had those conversations and they're very aware of, of this and we wanna make sure that it doesn't escalate into schools or anything of that nature.